Mr. Bolton.
Here.
Councilwoman Brooks is absent this evening, but feeling better, she wants everyone to know. Councilwoman Jones?
Here.
Councilwoman Perry?
Here.
Vice President Hall?
Here.
President Walter?
Here.
Mary and Ozzie?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We just adjourned from an executive session for employment. We have upcoming public meetings and events. December fifth at seven PM is our council workshop meeting. December twelfth at six PM, we have a council executive session, followed by our regular council meeting at seven PM. So, we're gonna spend some time on this before we start taking those comments. So, we're here to go through the preliminary budget for this evening. So, the biggest question that everyone's fine is what we pay for the deal. There has been several businesses that the county, everyone should know, have made several meetings. The county threw in an assessment of everyone's property, including businesses, right? There were several businesses, mostly all of them, that went down. Their assessment went down. What that did is they also then appealed to have a value review for a second. With that being said, that loss of revenue for Serra, including repayment of taxes. Biggest one that hurt them on the community, we owe two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars in taxes. They paid for their peers and they resorted to use that as a community yield, they are now through that number. It's also a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars in year-end losses, which is probably the biggest number ever. With everything, as everyone knows, I don't think it's going up, like the price of everything, gas, electric, water, everything. Sewer, Delcorte just says with a twelve point five percent sewer. So, the biggest question, what does that mean for us? So, that means for us, unfortunately, we do have to increase taxes. We started this back in August, and the number that was thrown out was now stronger, remember? That none of us liked that law, and we did everything that we put into it, cut every possible corner that we could have to lower that number. Thankfully, as most of you know, Alliance, the Alliance property, where they were sold, did have an exchange for tax for that. That money is not just going to be saved. That money was used to lower this village number down. It's also going to allow us to set up a GFOA account, which is the first time the borough has had one since the mid-nineties.
What does that mean?
You can tell that has two lots of operational ones in it for the borough. So, if there's an emergency, something happens, somebody, an entire block or ladder, like, you know, sticks to the street, you have money to put there. Just trying to help out, we just now have a blood tanning center in the corner, which is a loan that the borough is pulling to kind of equip it. And we started getting tax money, and we still have to be able to take that. This is going to be the end of that. The magic numbers that everyone on the third actually is waiting for, we are at nine point six million. Which is a two point four nine increase, so two R forty-nine cent increase for a hundred. It's, I'm sorry. Yeah, two R forty-nine cents. So, what does that mean? If your house is assessed at a hundred thousand dollars, you're going to pay two hundred and twenty-nine dollars for it for the year. It's about twenty dollars a month to get us. One of the other costs that kind of hit that number to me, if you got, is the AMX services. We budgeted to do full-time AMX services. You're moving forward with negotiations that we're handed. We are working with the fire department to make sure that we have everything nailed down, and we have the annuals and the licenses. Making sure that it runs smoothly. Being able to hire AMX staff. We have AMX coverage. So, since Delcorte kind of used the twelve point five percent increase also. We did have to also change sewer fees, going from five dollars and seventy-five cents per thousand gallons to six dollars and forty-five cents. However, you're going to lower the minimum again. So, if everyone remembers, it used to be three hundred and forty-five dollars flat fee. Everyone needs to have forty-five dollars to live. And then the businesses had to step up soon, right? Last year, we implemented it by dollar amounts, five dollars and twenty-five cents per thousand gallons. After you can insert the amount of money, but your minimum is two hundred dollars, so everyone needs two hundred dollars.
No.
Minimum. You use more than whatever that it went down to, you then pay five dollars and seventy-five cents per additional thousand gallon of water. You're going to lower the minimum to a hundred and twenty-five dollars this year. And then it'll be six dollars and forty-five cents per thousand gallons after that. There's a total of about seven hundred eighty.
Please? Yes, Mr. Bolton, or Councilwoman Bolton, can you read this down? We have the numbers about what everyone's sewer bill is.
Okay, so. So, what people were paying before the three hundred and forty-five dollars, that they'll still be about seven hundred properties out of the nine hundred properties that you still have. They'll still pay that, that fee. That's what you should be paying. Lowering to a hundred and twenty-five would allow us to do is, three hundred and ten properties will actually only be paying for a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Approximately three hundred and, of that three ten, an additional seventy people, the properties will pay a hundred and fifty. And an additional hundred will still be paying the two hundred dollars. So, in other words, by saving, over the last two years, you were at three forty-five before. If you, if you don't use a lot of water, and most of the people that are, who are conscious, are going to be in that hundred and twenty-five dollars. I looked at a lot of different properties and looking at, you know, some of the, you know, residents that are, you know, one or two people in a house. They're right there at the hundred and twenty-five mark, which means you're saving two hundred and twenty dollars versus two years ago. Which is, over the last two years, you're basically, you know, you save two, a hundred and forty-five a year before it. So, it's gonna help out, at least with, since you are having to raise the taxes. You're kind of, you lower your sewer fee, and even though you're raising your taxes a little bit. The other thing is, no, no trash fee was implemented, which meant, you know, that's another two hundred and fifty dollars a year savings, because you're not paying for trash. That also goes into effect that you're not, you know, you're gonna save that money too. So, overall, even though the tax billage is going up, and you're gonna spend a little bit more on your taxes, you're not paying the trash fee. And if you're cautious about how much water you use, you're gonna save big on the store.
Bill, do you explain that Pico part where he was talking about?
Go.
Yeah. Were you talking about the minimalizing personal demand?
Oh, that's for the sewer.
That's for the sewer. It's sewers, not the, yeah, that's sewers. So, in other words, like, I don't, no, you used to pay three, Delcorte, you used to pay three hundred and forty-five dollars flat fee. Okay, that's what we used to pay over two, three years ago, okay? Before last year, and they implemented the five thousand gallon usage. So, you would pay three hundred and forty-five dollars of flat fee. Out of all the properties in Eddie'sville, seven hundred and eighteen owners still paying that same fee. Out of that seven eighteen, six hundred and fifty-four of those people are gonna have a three hundred dollar bill or less. Out of that, four hundred and eight-four of those people will have a two hundred dollar bill or less. Out of that, three hundred and eighty people will have a hundred and fifty dollar bill or less. And out of that, three hundred and ten people will get the minimum of a hundred and twenty-five dollars. So, the idea is, instead of keep raising sewer cost by putting that, as we said last year. It, it made the commercial properties pay for what they were using because of residents before were paying for the commercial properties. Right now, and we're still having trouble collecting, the commercial properties don't like the fact that we did this, because now, due to residents and myself and the rest of the cast here. We're not paying for their sewer bill, we're paying for our own sewer.
It's more individualized.
It's individualized, and they don't like it because now, all of a sudden, their sewer bill, we had one property never paid a dime. And they still haven't even paid this year's sewer bill, and we're fighting with the past.
But that was already in effect, how is that changing?
What do you mean?
Like going forward?
I, I don't know.
What was already, what was already in effect?
That sewer bill.
You mean, what changed between last year and this year? The mileage, what, what the price per thousand gallons changed, okay? It went up because Delcorte's price went up, okay? But the minimum went down. So, in other words, for instance, Josh, you, you live by yourself, right? So, your water bill is probably not very high. It's probably low, because unless you're like pumping water, or have a running toilet, or making pipes, your water bill's gonna be low. If your water bill's low, your sewer bill will be low. So, in other words, if you, if you use less than twenty-three thousand gallons of water in a year, okay? Your bill is only gonna be a hundred and twenty-five dollars, so, that's it. Instead of three hundred and forty-five, is what it was two years ago.
That's what, what's two years ago, what's last year?
Last year, it was two hundred minimum.
Two hundred was the minimum.
So, in other words, last year, you would've paid two hundred dollars.
Me?
No, we wouldn't, because we didn't have a minimum. So, even if you, like, no, we're.
We're assuming that he wasn't conscious of the money, right? And you may not, I'm just, I, I don't want to assume that that's what he, and you're like, that's not really my idea.
Some people let things run, and they pay a higher water bill, and then they have to pay a higher sewer fee. But the thing is, if you paid the two hundred dollars last year, you might've only had to pay a hundred and twenty-five, because seventy-five of that, you might not have been reached. That's why we're lowering the minimum, because there's three hundred and ten people that just made the minimum. It's weird, just shade, we're just trying to shade everybody off.
No, it, no, it makes sense, okay.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't seem like it's going to offset the rest of the, the millage rate, but.
Okay, so if you pay a hundred and twenty-five, and you went for three forty-five, that's a two hundred and twenty dollar savings, correct? We'll pay you three forty-five, okay?
It will let you. No, you gotta compare to, to last year, so it would be two hundred.
Okay, so, what I'm saying is, it's all part of the same ordinance, so we're lowering the ordinance to make it so that you're getting that full savings of two hundred and twenty dollars overall. You didn't have a tax increase last year, so you're gonna have an overall savings of two hundred and twenty dollars. We have no tax, we have no trash fee, that's another two hundred and fifty dollars. The two together is four hundred and seventy dollars. Your house value would have to be assessed at over two hundred thousand dollars, just to even break those even. If your house was assessed at a hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand, that four hundred and seventy thousand, about four hundred and seventy dollars a year, is less than what the taxes and whatever are paying. Much less.
Is this also that Pico increased two hundred and something thousand?
That's two hundred and thirty, so that doesn't have to be, that doesn't have to be a disbursement, that has to be.
That's a little, that has to be.
So, are we trying to just pay that off?
Yeah, we're paying that off.
We don't have choice.
We have, we have to give you the money back. Plus, you lost it, because it went down, so you lost that hundred and thirty thousand dollars every year also.
Right now.
You're paying them back the money that they gave you, and then you lost that revenue.
So, is that part of the increase, we all have that in effect for?
That's all part of the increase. That's, everything's taken care of with, with that, going up that two point four nine.
Do you expect next year to be able to come down?
I would expect, I would expect it to go down, I don't expect it to go up.
Not, it's definitely not gonna go up, because.
We have a word.
Oh, yeah, I was just kidding.
All right, so, big buildings that were built down on Chevy Street, that look like Amazon buildings, we're gonna lose, right?
Everyone thinks they're gonna be Amazon, we're not sure, we don't know.
But, those buildings, in the process of also selling, they got an assessment value also. Right now, that property was only assessed at three and a half million dollars.
Three point five million.
But it's still, it's the problem. So, now, when they come in with the assessment, now it's reassessed at one hundred and seventy million, one seventy-one, add the three, so it totals like seven, one seventy-four. Total, is the new assessment, but we're not gonna see that money all this year at all. Because they have the word, which means they get a tax rate this year. In other words, there's, they're only gonna pay taxes on that three point five million dollars. Next year.
That's what they paid last year.
Which was when they paid last year. Next year, in 2024, we're asking if the taxes are gonna have to go up, they'll have to pay ten percent of it.
Ten percent of their taxes.
Which means, you're gonna have an assessment value increase in the borough of seventeen million dollars. Which, if you calculate out that nine point six, it comes out to approximately a hundred and sixty-some thousand dollars we're adding to the, to what you're getting in tax revenue. You're gonna do that every year for ten years. Really, unless you don't have to raise taxes for the next ten years. I mean, and, and there's other things, like, once they put people in the building, as they're saying, anywhere between four hundred to eight hundred people, you get the one percent for income tax credit. Buildings that are next door are supposed to be built another set of warehouses there, that's gonna bring that assessment value up also. So, we're hoping by doing what we're doing now, you may not have to raise, I'm hoping to not raise taxes, again, for a long time. Because even with your, you know, your employee, you know, obviously, police wages go up, everybody's, the roadways go up, expenses go up. But you're adding that tax credit every year for the next ten years, guaranteed. Unless something drastic happens, the place burns down, and they turn around, I don't think they have a difference. But. It's their benefit department, right? And it allows us also to have, like I said, that full-time AMX, you know? No trash fee still.
Yeah, and we need to produce a lot of, you know, there's a lot of.
Do you have any, I did look at it forward, do you have any personnel, how you members in here for the projects this year?
Every, for, for the.
For a project, I mean.
For.
In addition to, in addition to the loaning.
That's it, that's all written public.
How much is that?
Eight.
What's the?
It's the debt service on it.
Two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, it's under forty-seven.
Exactly how, what village are, are taxes going up?
Total, was total, or how much?
How mu, how much village, so it's got.
Two point four. Two point four nine.
So, that's gonna be.
Two dollars and forty-one cents for a thousand dollars, or two, two dollars and forty-nine cents for a thousand dollars.
In here, I just want to say something, where am I saying, where am I saying, wait a minute, wait, wait, wait. It says down here on the first page, ordinary income expenses, all the way down the bottom, it says dumpster permits and trailer permits. Nobody enforces that, so that's why you're not getting. We have Cocos across the street from me, three years, I have been saying, get that truck off the street so we could park extra cars. Guess what? There she blows, that truck is right there, anytime he wants to park it. In fact, we could get two trucks sometimes on the street.
We call it a dump truck, or a dump.
It's a, it's a dumpster, it's a big truck.
A trailer.
Trailer, that we're not supposed to park on the street. And I have been after them for years, and now they're another one, goes parking on Leaper.
So, that would be on the commercial deal, if I say we have slated that vehicle in the past, and we'll stay more on top of that, that's different than the.
They're not certified.
Yeah, but we're not let, we're not allowed to park even a, a big box van on the street. And now that we have all, everybody is there, and everybody's got two or more cars. If he wants to park in front, okay. If he wants to bring his friend and let his friend overnight, or two or three days, park on Leaper, okay.
So, Mr. Johnson, I agree with you a hundred and ten percent, and we have cited him in the past, and I hope that problem was more rectified, so we'll be back on top of that.
Yeah, I mean, it's not the cops' fault, I mean, if they, if I tell them, you know, because they're always.
Oh, it is.
I mean, because I don't think it's fair to everybody else.
I agree.
You know?
Parking is a place for every resident.
Yeah.
My friend was just texting me yesterday that she's called, and she's complained numerous times about all the commercial vehicles on her street. She says nothing's been done.
Okay, I will speak to you later in the meeting.
I think the cops should really start ticketing people for all the parking. We wouldn't have to raise taxes. If they gave out tickets for the parking violations, and do something about all the people just throwing their trash and mattresses all over, we would have money.
Ask, I thought you'd ticket those people, doesn't mean that you're coming back in.
But then eventually, you tow their car, they don't pay, put a boot on it.
What do you do for the letter, how, how do you make them pay?
I do what?
So, people that are littering, how do you make money, or such, I don't know.
Put a lien on their property, eventually, they're gonna sell it, and then you get the money then.
Well, so, I mean, I mean, it's not gonna help us. So, to your point, honestly, you can ask, I, every, every morning, I, I drop my children off at school, right, so I drive them. And I call up, here's the trash here, here's the trash here, here's trash bags on the curb on a Saturday, right? Here, they're not even in a can, so, one of the people in this, that are on the, the agenda tonight to pass the quality of life. To where, we don't have to worry about citations so much, it allows us to write a ticket. So, what happens ideally is, let's say, I throw my trash in a, in a bag on the curb, and I don't care. And code or help, the help department comes, they write, they write me a citation, so I clean it up, and say, well, now I wanna appeal, I'm not gonna go to the court, I take pictures. I walk into the court, and I say, look, your honor, I cleaned up my stuff, and the judge goes, okay, dismissed, right? Now, we're paying the open to be there, we're paying all the stuff, to where the quality of life citation is going to exist, with that, to where we can actually write, please, if you feel, if you feel, please, don't have to change anything. Maybe that will be a deterrent for these people, to your point, and you're just putting things out there, throwing trash out there, you know, not really taking care and having pride in our property. Hopefully, that will deter them, and will start to go in the right direction.
Hope, I doubt it, but.
I mean, we're trying.
I know.
I mean, we fixed the, we fixed the truck room that sat for three years from the leaves.
Yeah.
And the leaf from the truck, so we can go around and pick up all the leaves in the borough. I mean, that's something we haven't had in three years.
My husband was raking the leaves, because he wanted to get them out of the trash last year, and he took them down.
Oh, God.
And he's been out of work since then.
Oh, sorry.
I know, and I'm like, have they never picked up the leaves?
We're, we're going around picking them up now.
Can I ask the, the police, do you have enough policemen in Eddie'sville?
We're, we're trying to get more as we can. Police field is like any other field in the country right now, it's really hard to recruit and retain, and that's one of the things we've discussed. We have a lot of consistent people that, so we are trying to build a force up, to a stronger force, so that's the numbers.
I see them all the time, I think they think I'm a criminal. They're always down my street, but I'm just wondering, you know, it's hard getting, to help anywhere. Can you get a McDonald's, you know?
Yeah, it's, staffing really keeps you back on that page.
Oh, I have something to tell you, this is something I found out today. If you have a sewer problem, on, say, your sewer's clogged, and you call Aqua, which is my insurance company for my sewer. And they come, and they snake it down, and they say that it's, the problem is in the street. The pipe broke in the street. Did you know you have to pay to have that yourself repaired, replaced, and dug up the street?
So, the property owner is responsible for your lateral, from the connection in your house, the connection in the whole street?
I never knew that, I never knew that.
I wanna say ninety-seven percent of the municipality of Delaware County are that way.
I would suggest, when they sent out the letter Aqua about, you know, they had that insurance. I, and I told, I talked to all the people in council, you know, the parities, and I told them the same thing. I would get it, because it's worth it, it's, it's.
Oh, it's worth it, yeah.
It's old, we have old pipes, and it's old infrastructure, and it's not something that the borough can replace, we can only replace the mains. We can't replace the ladders, the ladders is part of the toll on this property, so, that's something I, I would take that insurance, because it's well worth it.
But it's limited, it's limited to, mine is limited to thirty-four hundred dollars. I just had a clog, and I had the, the third plumber coming out, you know, this weekend. And they told me that if it's past the curb, and it's in, and the pipe is broken in, in the street, I have to pay, repair it. I have to dig it up, and I have to repair that, and it's thousands and thousands of dollars.
And the insurance doesn't.
That's what Aqua told you.
And the insurance doesn't, your insurance won't cover that, you said?
It only covers thirty-four hundred dollars.
Is that for a service call, though, or for the repair?
For the repair. For the repair.
What did you see on your reading about that, right? I, I purchased the insurance, you know, it's, it's still under a hundred for everything. It's, it's complete coverage.
So, is mine, but not out, and they don't tell you, not out in the street. I mean, I've lived here, what, eighty-two years, I already knew that, and I've never known anything happen out there. And I'm, I'm keeping my fingers crossed that it's not out there. But, they don't tell you that. And then what happens if they, because they said they're gonna contact the borough and have the street dug up. And I'm going, oh, sure, go ahead, why not, I mean, I don't care. And then he says, I have to pay for it. I says, I'll get a shovel. You know, do it myself. But, yeah, from the connection to the connection.
Yes.
In, in the street, it's your responsibility. Now, I would like to know, can we get some kind of insurance for that?
The only one I know of is Aqua, and I thought, I was under the impression that it's a first job.
Yeah.
All the way out to, it says it covers your ladders, and.
I don't know, I've read it.
Yeah, I mean.
From what I, from what I've also, what I've read, it covers, I mean, most.
That's what I thought, that's what I thought until today.
My niece lives in Springfield, and like, four years ago, she had to have that done, and she had the insurance, and she said, she needed to put out a couple hundred dollars.
That's what we, that's what I thought.
Yeah, that day, she said it was absolutely wonderful.
My daughter had to put it out in her driveway, the water was leaking, and it's like a city block from her house to the water main. And they did the whole thing, dug everything up, with the pipes sitting on, they did it on Ashland Avenue when I had a problem there. But they say the sewer is your responsibility.
There's, there's always an insurance on it. Sure, and you're worth both.
But, no, no, actually, it's not. If, if you have the water, the insurance for your water, well, they'll take care of the water up until they connect it to the street. Because that happened to both of my rentals, and, and they, they took care at one hundred percent. The one on Ashland Avenue I had, they, I didn't even know we had a leak, and the guy was looking there, he says, there's a hole here in your lawn. I goes, I don't live here, I ran it, you know? And I didn't know it, the girl didn't tell me, and here it was leaking. And they dug up from, I have one of these homes in Ash, on Ashland Avenue, the, between Eleventh and Tenth, the row. They dug up from there, all the way down, the sidewalk, the, the curb, and into the street, and I paid nothing. Nothing. And this is why I was really concerned about the sewer, because our sewers are old.
They are.
You know, and I think that if people, they should know, we should know about it. I don't know what the heck we could do about it, but.
We've been talking about how the service cameras, about the, the sinkhole issues that we've had, especially on, especially on our topic for, for this year, right? We've been, we've been hammering, cleaning sewer lines, section by section.
It's scary, I'll tell you, especially when the people, the population's getting older. Well, I got five animals, I could rent one out. Well, I've got five animals, I could rent one out.
I could look into possibly getting somehow representative from one of the companies to come out here and see that helps us in any way for questions to be asked or what we can do, you know, prevent that. Can you touch base with finish your stop job line for that, and then if we find something that we can advertise? Any other questions on the budget this evening?
We have an ordinance about playing music too loud after eleven o'clock.
That's the noise ordinance and that would be a police matter.
Is that after eleven o'clock?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, it is, it's specifically about that one.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Y, I'm sorry, I was, I was gonna make sure part of your mouth, I'm rushing.
Oh.
What?
I know. I knew that, I knew that, I knew you were reading and I didn't know it would hurt, so I just wanted to be sure that I was hearing everybody in the comments, maybe to ask some second question about the budget.
What are they doing about the old, uh, firehouse? Are they gonna renovate that or what are they gonna do?
Yes.
And that, is that, is that going to be the municipal building?
Yes.
Now, where's the police going?
State police.
You're gonna stay there?
Yes.
Are you happy? Are you happy?
It will be an improvement from what we have, yes.
Now, I did hear that, that the house at Joe Pessella that we bought on, uh, Twelfth Street, two houses down. How much rent are we gonna get from that?
Seven hundred and fifty dollars a month.
I'll rent it for that and move out of my big house.
Which you would've had to put in about a hundred thousand dollars or more just to fix it up.
Well, don't you have to do that, do you have to put a bathroom and water and? Pardon me?
The people that rented it, which is a school leader, they put in the whole bill to redo the house, do electric, plumbing, heat, air conditioning, all.
Now, they're gonna pay, really, so guess what?
Why would they do that and then?
That's they do, they did it to the other house that they used as well.
They, um, and they figured the borough's not gonna sell property, so it's, it was a deep laughter, the house could've been tore down. But they wanted the house so that they could use it for, um, Mary's house, Mary's house and then. And it works out good, works for the school district, works for the borough.
And if you're not familiar with Mary's House, they take, um, people, some like skills, how to survive on their own.
They're the ones that are down here now.
So, so December first is their first, their first monthly payment, seven hundred and fifty dollars, and they pay all the utilities. Um, but like I said, they, they spent, the school district spent the money and any donations they got to repair the house so that they would pass check.
Are they gonna put some parking spaces in the back?
Yes, that's, that's gonna, that's gonna be for the police departments.
Out of the alley? Yeah, and then like into the lawn or something?
Yeah, well, they're gonna put a fence so that across halfway back to the yard, that we can park probably, I don't know, six or seven cars back there between the police cars back there.
And you did six or seven correctly?
Oh, yeah, that's a really wide, in front of the.
Alright ladies, this is very entertaining, but we have to get back to the budget here, as we have some ordinance, so we can move on, I have, please, if I have to be, just the budget. No other questions about the budget? Before we move on to motions, I'm really quick, I just wanna, uh, say thank you to the International Brotherhood of Willikers, Ironship Builders, Lasts, Supporters and Helpers Local, eight oh two, for donating. Eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars to our, um, holiday week giveaway that we do for the children here. So thank you to them, that's like, on our record, meaning I will cut that video footage as well, that you can see that they were very interested in helping in any way that they can. Right, council, yeah, I have a motion to accept the two thousand twenty-three budget as preliminary, so order, sir. I have a motion made by Vice President Hall, seconded by Councilman Dunn, council any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Council, may I have a motion to advertise the two thousand twenty-three preliminary budget, so. I have a motion made by Vice President Hall, seconded by Councilman Jones, council any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Council, may I have a motion to advertise the tax levy for two thousand twenty-three ordinance number six seventy-six?
Order.
I have a motion made by Vice President Hall, seconded by Councilman Jones, council any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Council, may I have a motion to approve the dumpster ordinance number six seventy-two?
Order.
I have a motion made by Councilman Jones, seconded by Vice President Hall, council any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Council, may I have a motion to approve sewer lateral ordinance number six seventy-three?
Order.
I have a motion made by Vice President Hall, seconded by Councilman Dunn, council any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Council, may I have a motion to approve the quality of life ordinance number six seventy-four?
Order.
I have a motion made by Councilman Perry and seconded by Vice President Hall, council any questions? Council, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Council, may I have a motion to approve sprinkler and fire alarm ordinance number six seventy-five?
Order.
I have a motion made by Vice President Hall and seconded by, 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 by Councilman Perry. Council, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. I have it, yep, six seventy-seven, yep, I got it, no, that's okay, thank you, perfect, I have my back. Council, may I have a motion to advertise? The amendment of sewer ordinance six six eight, which will be the ordinance six seventy-seven?
Order.
I have a motion made by Vice President Hall, seconded by Councilman Perry, council any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Before we motion to return, uh, a few announcements, we have our senior holiday luncheon, all seniors are cordially invited to the annual senior luncheon. This Saturday, December third at Joe Pessella at twelve P M. Anyone indeed have arrived or aware of any senior residents unable to attend, please call borough hall, six seventy-seven four one one zero zero. We also have Cocos container, it is a drive-through, walk-up turkey breast and pan dinner package, classified class. On December eighteen, from eleven A M to one P M, regular Eddie Stone Fire Company. The Eddie Stone Holiday Happenings, um, we have the tree lighting and Carolyn parade December seventh, meet at lighthouse hall at six fifteen. The borough will give away for the children, December tenth, standing against the journey around town on the fire truck at ten A M. December storytime is December thirteenth at lighthouse hall at seven P M. And Eddie Stone New Year's Fall, December thirtieth, from six thirty to eight thirty at lighthouse hall. Council, anything else? I'd just like to add that all, sure, let's make a couple supplies, go at the, um, players' hall.